In some cases are exceptional learners. The N size is smaller than 10, but you have that for your review and print. It just won't be displayed. So, starting off, we're going to begin in math. And when we think about the Smarter Balance Assessment, there's four claim areas. Claim two and four get reported back combined. So that's problem solving and modeling and data analysis. I wanted to situate us in thinking about our regional alliance cohort. So, the districts listed here that East Haven is a part of, they meet three criteria. We're a part of the ACES region. We are in the demographic reference group, the DRG for G or H. East Haven is in the G. And we receive alliance funding and are part of alliance monitoring. So we'll take a look at some trend patterns with East Haven's comparison. So this is a similar bar graph that you're going to see at a few different points. In this case, it's Smarter Balance Assessment. It's looking at an average of our Smarter Balance performance, grades three, four, and five, that are tested. The blue indicates East Haven Public Schools. Orange is our alliance cohort that I just showed. And then, looking at the connection to the state of Connecticut. So when we look at math, there is a steady increase over the past three years in the state of Connecticut. We see kind of a similar pattern with our alliance cohort. And while East Haven continues to be above our regional cohort, last year we saw that that gap narrowed in math. And that's a pretty consistent theme in 23, 24, that you're going to see in science and ELA as well, when we're averaging third, fourth, and fifth together. So next, I want to take us into an opportunity, and you have this up front with you, but it's an opportunity to look at a comparison of how our schools performed across the grade levels. So, when you're looking at this data, we'll begin with just third grade here. You see our four schools that have third grade with them. The red shows level one scoring, so that's below grade level. Yellow is still below grade level as well. It's a level two and it's approaching that standard. The green gives you the percentage of students that are proficient at level three on grade level. And blue indicates performing above grade level. So we can take a look at third. We had an opportunity to see fourth. Fifth. And then collectively. So we want to drill down into these. So the next set of data that you see brings back into focus grades three, four, and five averaged together, but we disaggregate it by our special populations. So you have with you a look at something that looks similar, but you'll notice first up is our multilingual learners. So students identified as English learners and those that are not. That's our first data point that you have in your packet that's not up here. The light blue shows that N size. So that's how many students in the tested grade levels can meet that criteria. So the first data slide that you have up here compares how students in special education are exceptional learners in grades three, four, and five are performing in comparison to their peers. And so this does a comparison between the two. And you can see those N sizes across our four schools. And then the next one is a different category that I'm not sure how much we've talked about, and it's the high needs designation. So with that, it's any student that is identified as a multilingual learner, an exceptional learner in special education, or they qualify for free reduced price lunch. A student could be thrice identified or just meet one of those categories. And you can see the impact on the N size across our various schools. And a comparison between students that meet that high needs description and their performance level versus those not. So I think what's most important when we look back at our data is to think about the noticings that emerge that support our ability to take action. And so, we've noticed that across the district in grades three, four, and five, from the math standpoint, that our greatest area for growth is really in that comboed claim area, where students have to problem solve, model, use data analysis. They're really applying the math skills that they have learned in kind of discreet ways and bringing them together in more complex ways. And so while that's not necessarily true for every school, it is a district-wide pattern that that's an opportunity for us to really grow in. But each grade level also provides another opportunity for us to see what the needs are with those specific groups of students. So in third grade, communicating reasoning was relatively low as well. So students' ability to communicate their understanding of the problem. And when we get to concepts and procedures, which was overall a stronger area, one of the lowest scoring targets at the most drilled-down level was students work with multiplication and division. And then noticing that we had across all of the Smarter Balance results at the grade levels is that the topics that are a part of our curriculum in the fall tended to be the areas where students were not as proficient. Whereas the topics you'll see that were our strengths were those that were most recently a part of their classroom instruction in the spring. And so that's really pointing to our work that needs to happen with spiraling back with this instruction across the year. In fourth grade, a couple of areas for growth were within fractions and involving measurement and converting measurements. And then in fifth grade, there's quite a few targets. That fifth grade test really does bring together a lot of concepts. Everything that we see here, again, represents that pattern of very beginning of the year. Or, in some of the cases, especially with fifth grade, we noticed that there was uneven exposure to these targets prior to testing. If the test was in early May, some fifth grade classes didn't get to these until mid or later May. And so sometimes we see the performances a little bit better on I-Ready, which tests later. In terms of areas of strength, there were some great noticings, again, that it demonstrated the students' ability with the instruction that they had had very recently. So for third grade, that was fractions. Fourth grade, we saw this with representing interpreting data, looking at fractions through like decimals. And then, fifth grade, geometric measurement with volume, which baffles me because that was an area of struggle that I had when leading a win group. But it was something that was very present in mind for our fifth graders moving into the test. Also, an interesting noticing when we compiled the scores, fifth grade in general did not, scores didn't decrease at the state level, but they did across our alliance region. So that's like an interesting noticing. And actually, even though our proficiency rate in fifth grade of students on and above grade level is 33%, it actually moved us to a higher standing in the alliance region, to where we were second only behind Meriden. So I think that's something curious that we need to continue to look at with this cohort of students. I also wanted to call attention, this graph that we showed, again, was an average of grades three, four, and five. But you'll notice where there's a plot point, it represents our third grade cohort, taking the Smarter Balance for the first time. And so, in 2021, 22, third graders, 35% were proficient and above. 22, 23, 35.4. And last year, 40.2%. So we're noticing some interesting trends, not average together in that way. A couple other highlights from math, since we were talking about disaggregated data. We saw that across the board, our fifth grade multilingual learners, their average percent of target achieved, which looks at their growth, not just their proficiency rate, was 17% higher than their peers, which is something we would expect to see when they have lower scores, that we're seeing that growth within those scores. This was also an interesting noticing too, for our students with high needs in math. Fourth and fifth graders, our fourth graders were on par with their peers. And fifth grade, again, meeting that high needs designation, scored a little bit higher, about 3% than their peers. Additionally, when we think about math, there were five classrooms across our third, fourth, and fifth grade learning spaces in the district where the average of the class was actually higher than the state average. And that's a trend we noticed across all the content areas of ELA and science, that we have a lot of strengths. And I'll talk about this with professional learning. We really need to make sure we're leveraging the expertise internally within our district and creating those pathways for teachers to share and learn with and from one another. Additionally, just to drill down a little bit more and make the connection to some of our internal measures like I-Ready. So early numeracy, we monitor through topic assessments. We progress monitor through cadence. But really, that's setting students up when they are by third grade applying those in more complex ways. And so, Smarter Balance, I-Ready, topic assessments, that's what kind of provides more of a glimpse into this work. And so, when we connect that to last year's growth internally through I-Ready, we see, and this is expanding out to all first and fifth grade, averaging together. So first through fifth, their beginning of the year placement was 8% on grade level. That's not terribly uncommon because I-Ready is looking at, do students have a general understanding of grade level content before it's been taught? That's kind of what that beginning of the year shares. So the typically is lower. That grew to an on-grade level of 41.6% by the end of the year. But I think really important to call out is we see a major discrepancy in our data between I-Ready and Smarter Balance, which really speaks to our need to look at the complexity of those tests. Smarter Balance requires way more students at a conceptual level and an analytical level than I-Ready does from the math lens. And so that's where we need to also be thinking about those classroom-based, real-world, authentic problems that invite students to apply their math learning. And that's really what they'll be using in the real world. Also wanted to call out, since this was one through five in the pie charts, you can take a look at our grades three, four, and five, and the percent of students that met typical growth across the district, as well as those that met their stretch growth in I-Ready. And that's really setting them up to accelerate progress beyond a year's growth. I-Ready also provides another opportunity for us to begin to triangulate some of our understanding of what's happening with our mathematicians. So when we take a look at the domain growth, this has been a historic trend, that geometry scores much lower than the other domains. It's not unique to invasions that geometry is placed at the end of a curriculum. It is a major component that we see in a lot of curricular resources. And so, it speaks to the degree to if a class is not meeting like kind of the pacing recommendations, they may not gain access to that geometry learning. And so, our teachers are talking about how do they spiral these skills in even prior to when it's coming up as a topic. We have in two weeks, a space where our fifth grade team is coming together to look at this very fact. And that's really interesting where their inquiry in the classroom is driving their professional learning needs. So, I want to pivot, and we're going to take a look at our national, or sorry, Next Generation Science Standards, or NGSS. So, again, science is not tested until fifth grade, even though it's a part of our curriculum all through elementary. There's a lot that students are needing to recall and be able to apply in very complex ways. Three domains that are reviewed are earth and space science, life science, physical sciences, and then science and engineering practices are also brought into play. Again, similar bar graph, you can see, again, this is just fifth grade, it's not an average. So, a three-year trend for East Haven Public Schools, Alliance Regional Cohort, and the state of Connecticut. Here, the state of Connecticut's fairly plateaued year after year. We see the same with our Alliance Regional Cohort, pretty consistent scores. And then, we see that trend again where last year, fifth grade science scores dipped with that specific cohort of students. Taking a look to, bringing it back to the school level, we can compare student scores. And again, kind of those four different placement levels. Here, we have the ability to disaggregate less, but you have ML population as well as our special education students. But we can look at an N size that's large enough to see the discrepancies that may or may not exist between our high needs. So this is combining again, multilingual learners, exceptional learners in special education, and those qualifying for free and reduced price lunch. Digging into some noticings here. Overall, we saw that the strongest area was practices and concepts in life sciences. This was something that was interesting. We took a further look at why that might be happening. I'm not saying it's the only reason, but our upper elementary always ends the year with their life sciences unit. And so that's like an interesting component to think about, how the placement of instruction across the year may or may not be contributing to certain points that stick for students. So, just kind of a general noticing to call out. Another piece that's really interesting, in all of our schools, there were classrooms that performed above and sometimes well above the district average. And we had a classroom that performed above the state average. So again, we see this trend that showed up in math instruction. We don't have other internal measures that really support this way other than curriculum-based. So I want to pivot to the last one that'll be a little more robust, and that's our English Language Arts. So here, we have four claims again. Reading of literature and informational texts get combined together. Listening is separate, and then writing along with research and inquiry get combined as well. So here, we return to this graph again. So, a reminder that this is third, fourth, and fifth proficiency and above. State of Connecticut, fairly stable. A little bit of dip and then some stabilizing with our Alliance Regional Cohort. And again, a narrowing of that gap between us and our Alliance Cohort, kind of furthering us from that state average when we look at the average of third, fourth, and fifth together. And we'll follow a similar pattern, where we'll break this down by grade level across our schools. In fourth grade. And then we can see our fifth grade performance. And then viewed collectively. So here again, multilingual learners are inside of your packet. So take a look at the N size attributed to that unique population of learners in our district. Here, we can see a disaggregation. On top again is our students in special education and those exceptional learners versus their peers outside of that programming and their performance levels. And here, again, we take a look through that similar lens of comparing our high needs population to those that are not meeting those qualification markers. So, strengths and opportunities are embedded here together because there was some really clear patterns. And I think due in part, the ELA test is different in that it's very cyclical in the way that our common core standards in English Language Arts come together. So relatively, the strength for us in the district across grades three, four, and five was in the reading claim. And literature and information kind of varied a little bit depending on the grade level. But two areas that were consistently lower, that continue to really be a pattern that we're seeing, is in connection to the listening claim, as well as the writing and research inquiry. When we look down to that more granular target level, there were three claims that really stood out in contrast. Informational text for word meaning. So students understanding the vocabulary and having strategy to attack that in informational texts. And two really showed up in our writing and research inquiry. So when students were asked to interpret and integrate information from across multiple sources, work with it in original ways, and then also apply grade level understanding of conventions, language standards for their editing, those were lower scoring. Some other noticings to point out related to ELA. So again, coming back to our disaggregated populations, so our fifth grade multilingual learners, their average percentage of target achieved was 5% above their peers. So again, interesting in terms of not necessarily showing up in level proficient, but accelerating that growth. And in fourth grade, our students in special education, their average percent of target achieved exceeded their peers by 4.4%. So that was nice to see with our specialized population. Similar stance again, when we take a look across the district, we see across all of our schools that there are grade levels, grade level teams, or individual teachers that are outperforming the district average for their grade level. And we had six classrooms that outperformed the state average, once again. So again, that is really significant that we need to be thinking about. And I want to point this out on our next slide. We, our third grade, their ELA scores were the highest last year that they have been since 2018, 19. This group has had consistent win instruction, or really formative years of first grade, second grade, and third grade. And they're the first group to be tested after receiving three consistent years of that instruction. What this did for us, and we can see it play out here, again, as those plot points, we've had relative inconsistency between third grade year after year. But this past year's third graders, this year's fourth graders, closed the gap between East Haven and the state average by 5.7%. And that is a really exciting trend that we are seeing. I also wanted to connect Smarter Balance to the work that's happening. Teachers have invested a lot of time and energy across last year, along with administrators. And it's really this idea of linking about what we know about skilled reading, how it emerges, how we support it, and the role of assessment and monitoring students' progress. So with this, at the top, we see this idea of language comprehension. Students don't need to be reading text to be doing comprehension work, right? This is part of oral language. So that idea of background knowledge, vocabulary, language structures, verbal reasoning, that ends up being assessed in their ability to apply that to print when we get to those upper grades and students are reading to learn by third grade. And so that is really what Smarter Balance is assessing. We see that in I-Ready, in our curriculum measures. But it's really interesting, I think, the notion that word recognition is the foundation in this image. And that is where we look at students' phonological processing, their decoding, their sight, word recognition. And that is really monitored through our DIBELS eight usage, and to a lesser degree, I-Ready can be supportive here as well. And as those strands weave together and we come towards that skilled reading, it's really important to note the importance of oral reading fluency as students become increasingly automatic. And I call this out because these are really important measures that we are looking at as we think about our beginning-of-the-year data. So again, in I-Ready, a similar trend. I-Ready reading has a more close mirror to the results we see in Smarter Balance. The test has some rigor that is comparable. Again, this is only assessing reading, so students' listening ability and their writing and research inquiry are not brought in to scope in the way that they are in the Smarter Balance. But at the beginning of last year, our first through fifth graders, their on-grade level was 18.6%. And by the end of the year, it was 45.6. And again, you can see through fourth and fifth, really called out. Here, their growth in reading surpassed their math growth that we saw in I-Ready. Really want to call attention to third and fourth, with 35% of students meeting their stretch growth. Curriculum associates who develops I-Ready indicate that typically, we don't see too much further than 30% with students meeting stretch growth year after year. Again, and this really highlights the connection, I believe, between I-Ready and Smarter Balance, where we see one of the greatest areas for growth. Even though students make growth, they continue to lag behind in informational reading in grades three, four, and five. And we spent a lot of time with grades three, four, and five, but we can't forget our kinder first and second grade students. And so we wanted to call out some of the growth that they've been making. That's a really heavy emphasis on, again, the work when we think about what does it take to be skilled readers? It starts early on, it doesn't begin in third grade. And so, for our K first and second, we can see their growth mapped out here in DIBELS eight composite scores from beginning of the year to the end of the year. And I wanted to take a moment to look at one of these cohorts. So, this is an interesting graph. It took me a while to wrap my mind around it, so I want to call it a couple labels on it. So this represents our current third graders. We have 155 current third graders who were with us at the beginning of kindergarten, and they were with us at the end of last year. This group of students were part of our extension of the day to include the 30-minute win instruction for kinder first and second. So they've received that solid instruction with us. So, at the top, measure one shows you students' placement at the beginning of kindergarten. So just to call more attention to those numbers, 65, specific, this is the percentage, this is actual, 65 of our unique learners, beginning of kindergarten, were well below. So that's in that red category. 57 of them came to us on and above grade level. If we take a look to where that same group of students was at the end of second grade with increasingly sophisticated measure, that the mark is ever-changing across the year and across the years. 33 of those students, so 65 to 33, well below. And we expanded that green and blue, so on and above, from 57 to 97. So that was really exciting to see. And this just speaks to, this is the group of students that will be testing with us in Smarter Balance later this year. Another way to look at that is to compare all of our second graders versus those second graders who have been with us for three years of instruction. And I want to call your attention to the difference in our above scoring. Our total group, so at the end of second grade, 24% were above. Students who have been with us for those three years, 40% placing above. So really interesting data point, I think, to consider. At this time, I'm going to invite our building leaders to come up. They've been doing some similar analysis with their building level teams. The review of last year's data really informs their launch back into professional learning in the fall. So this is a representation of some noticings that have already been informing work. And they're going to make some connections as well to BOY data that's showing up this year. So Laura Cattella from Dear Run. I think it's on.
Okay, thank you so much for having me. Okay, so I'm here to highlight a little bit about what the data is looking like at Dear Run. So we are pre-K three, so we get our learners when they're three years old to grade two. So we can move on to the next slide. So one of the things that we're highlighting today is the DIBELS data for some of our current first graders and our current second graders. This measure that we're using for DIBELS is a verbal measure, where students need to have some oral language in order to go through this assessment. Many of our students, when they come in as three-year-olds, have no spoken language and no expressive language. So we have some really great celebrations to share for where students have come in from when they were three to where they currently are now. So this is an overarching view of what our current first graders look like on the DIBELS data. We're going to highlight on here the letter sounds and the correct letter sounds, where the blue arrow is. So thinking about this measure, if students don't know their letter names and their letter sounds, it's going to be really difficult to read. So if we go on to the next slide, we're going to look at that a little bit deeper. So in our current first grade class, we have 52 students enrolled in first grade. Out of those 52 students, 42 of those students were with us for kindergarten, and they're still with us now for first grade. If you look at the first like box on the left-hand side, we had 32 students that were well below in that red range when they came to us as kindergartners. Now as first graders, 16 of those students are still in that red, well below. We have four that are below benchmark, that yellow, that are approaching. We have eight students that have met benchmark, and four that have exceeded benchmark. So that's a pretty significant number for students that came in well below. That next little box shows students that were below benchmark. So in that yellow range when they were kindergartners, now as first graders, we have three students meeting and one student well above benchmark. That similar trend for students that came in as kindergartners on benchmark, we have two that stayed at benchmark, and three that moved into exceeding. And then, we were super fortunate, we had one student well above benchmark coming in as a kindergartner last year, and now as a first grader has maintained that. So they came in high, we instructed them, and they stayed in that high band above benchmark. So if we keep going, we have the same kind of added glance looking at second grade, but the nuance there is we're still looking at that correct letter sounds, but we're looking at words recorded correctly. So not only do we want students to know their letter names or letter sounds, but we also want them to be able to use it in words. So currently, we have had a lot of transition in second grade. So we have 50 students currently enrolled. Out of those 52 students, 38 have been with us since kindergarten. So this comparison looks at students in kindergarten that are current second graders. So 27 of our current second graders were well below goal when they came to us two years ago. Nine of those students still are in that red band. Six of them are now approaching in the yellow band, nine are meeting, and three are exceeding. So again, thinking about that growth from where they came in as kindergartners, well below in that red band. Thinking, I'm really excited about this one. In that yellow below measure, we had four students as kindergartners that were in that yellow, they were below benchmark. Right now, we have Right now, we have three of them meeting and one exceeding. We have a little bit of a different story here at benchmark. So we had seven students that were at benchmark at the beginning of kindergarten. Out of those seven, we have one that kind of dipped below benchmark. So thinking about, like, the story behind, like, what's happening with a student that came in at benchmark in kindergarten, and how did they dip? So thinking about maybe some of their gaps, maybe some of their attendance patterns, and kind of telling that story of what other support does that one student need. We have one student that dipped similarly into below benchmark, five that are at benchmark. And in this particular grade, in grade 2, there were no students that came in above benchmark as a kindergartner. So then what does this mean? Like, where are we headed? So at Dear Run, we decided to keep our WIN instructional block. So in the past, Dear Run had a full hour for WIN, the "what I need" time. With the shorter school day this year, we have been able to preserve 25 minutes every morning from 9:00 to 9:25 to continue that small group. So that was something we were able to maintain in kindergarten first and second grade. We are using a similar lesson planning template across all classrooms. In the past, maybe your classroom teacher was using a certain lesson planning template, but maybe your special ed teacher, your multilingual teacher was using a different one. Now everyone is using the same language and the same learning template. In our literacy block, everyone is in the classroom for whole-group instruction. Everyone is receiving targeted small group from their classroom teacher. The coaches and interventionists are supporting in the classroom daily. And the last bullet that I added on, foundations is not only being used K through 2. We are using foundations with our pre-K as well. So our special education pre-K that we house at Dear Run is also using the pre-K version of foundations, and we're hoping to see that have a positive impact on students down the road.
Thank you so much, Laura. So next, we'll have Christina Torre come up with East Haven Academy.
Hi, thanks for having me. I'm Christina Torre, and as you know, East Haven Academy is grades 1 through 8. I am only talking about elementary this evening. I'll be back on November 12th to talk about middle school data. Go to the next slide. So looking at our elementary data, and again, I'm going to touch on some DIBELS data here. I was looking for trends as far as our beginning of the year, or, I'm sorry, our beginning-to-end of the year data. Where did we see the biggest gains? And where did we see the least amount of growth? And therefore, I just want to speak a little bit about what we're doing about both of those. And I saw a glaring trend between our, I'm just going to highlight grades 1 and 3, just for the sake of this discussion topic. In grades 1 and 3, from the beginning of last year to the end of last year, we saw the biggest gain in the ORF. And going back to what Adam was referencing earlier, that's that decoding. That's that decoding piece of the DIBELS, and it really is the building block of all the other skills. And this makes complete sense. I definitely want to speak to our ongoing partnership with the Hill for Literacy, because I greatly feel that it contributes to that. Teachers have really, really fallen into a nice comfort zone with their confidence in administering targeted small group instruction that speak to decoding skills. So when I look at this data, this speaks directly to that. In addition to this, our teachers are working very closely with our reading coach and our intervention, in which they received consistent modeling of small group decoding plans. And also, again, just to reiterate, that with the Hill for Literacy in their partnership, we have really made a lot of great gains with just the implementation of daily targeted small group instruction. And now what's nice is that we're seeing this not only in literacy, but in all subject matters. I feel like the other piece of this is that there's been a strong emphasis on vocabulary computation. And another piece of this, again, to reiterate our partnership with the Hill, is that a piece of this is really, as an administrator, it gives me a more focused lens on what to look for when I'm in literacy blocks. Before, again, my background is as a math coach. So prior to this partnership, yes, I would see small group happening, but that I really know what the target was and what were the look fours. So this partnership has helped me as an administrator to really look for those look fours. And it's also allowed me to provide teachers with really timely, specific feedback during regular classroom visits. And again, this is the same data that's showing that in grade 3, again, with that biggest gain in the ORF, which is the decoding. I will speak about the areas that we saw the least amount of growth. This is the words read fluently. And again, there was some growth, but not as significant as we saw in the other areas. So when we were looking at this specific assessment of the WRF, the Words Read Fluently, it's very complex. It's a range of words and vocabulary words that go into multi-syllabic combinations and things like this. And these aren't specifically words that we specifically teach to. So I will address some things that we are now looking forward to this year to kind of integrate that, to see if we can find a stronger pattern of growth in this area for next year. So then looking, I want, one of the questions that I was thinking to myself is, with all of this partnership and this heavy emphasis and collaborative work we're doing around targeted small group instruction, are we in a better place this year than we were last year? And the answer is both yes and some areas where we still need some growth. So looking at some cohort data, we saw significant up in the amount of students that were on grade level, our current second graders. So the first show you, shows you last year's first graders who are second, who are this year's second graders, and also last year's second graders who are this year's third graders. We saw significant growth in their BOY scores. Looking ahead at our current fourth and fifth graders, if you do a couple of clicks, we're a little bit stagnant there. And really, when I was looking at, closely at this data, those are the grade bands at EHA that we currently have the highest populations of students with special education, specifically IEP reading goals. And so for me, when I looked at this and was talking with my partners, this really speaks to, and Laura spoke a little bit about it from Dear Run, the need to provide our special education staff with the same learning plan templates, the same professional development and partnership that our regular education teachers have had with the Hill for Literacy. I really feel strongly for that. Again, special education and general education teachers are always striving to find more collaborative time together, and I feel that if we strengthen that professional development and resources that they've received from Hill for Literacy with our special education staff, I think it would directly speak to this. So again, just piggybacking on what Laura was saying about using the same resources across the special education and general education teachers. So to speak to kind of that area where there was the least amount of growth in our DIBELS, thinking about that words read fluently assessment, again, because those words aren't specifically taught, the teachers are now working diligently on a daily basis to just find ways to just naturally integrate exposure to that vocabulary, including the various other types of syllable types, including various trick words. And that is done, one platform we use is Epic, which we'll continuously expose to and so those range of words, and that is being implemented regularly. Teachers are also being really mindful about their implementation of read-alouds and choosing texts and books that really, really expose them to those variety of words that we're, hopefully, we'll see that carry over when they take that assessment on the WRF. That's our hope. And yes, students are being exposed to regular decoding texts throughout daily various implementations. And I think that was all of my thoughts.
Thank you, Christina. So next, I'd like Paul DiBernardo to come up, principal of Farrar.
Hi, I'm Paul DiBernardo from Farrar School. Thank you for having me. The data that we are, that I'm highlighting are thoughts and noticings regarding our multilingual learners. And it should be noticed that the multilingual learners that we looked at are both those that have exited via last links or those that have not exited, because even once you exit, you are still monitored for support services. And we looked at last year's fifth graders. So we did fifth grade, because most of those students in the fifth grade had been with us the longest. All right, we had third grade, fourth grade. And so we knew a lot about these students, so that's the group that we looked at for this presentation. And we looked at not just their ESBA scores, but also their iReady. This chart shows, and I'm going to kind of work backwards on this. I'm going to kind of show you like an end result, and then I'm going to move forward from there, almost like going back to the future. This is our 23-24 end-of-the-year growth for our ML fifth graders. And the first column shows our typical growth as measured by iReady. And the typical growth is the growth expectation. And we had 77% of our fifth grade multilingual learners meet their typical growth as measured by the end-of-the-year assessment. And within that band of 77%, 69% of them made enough improvement to actually move a grade level. We had a couple of students that actually moved two grade levels within that band. And the last column shows their performance on the ESBA and for both at and above and approaching. And it's, I was, while Adam was talking, I was actually thinking of this, talking about, like, and we, Adam and I had this core, this conversation about the correlation between what we're seeing in iReady and how that is transferring over to success or a lack of success on the ESBA. And so they're good conversations to have, they're necessary conversations to have. And it also should be noticed, and I wrote down this note, actually, Adam, while you were talking about this, is that for multilingual learners, just keep in mind that the ELA on this test, I mean, that's the hardest part for a language learner, because it's very text-heavy. And it's composed of reading, writing, and listening, and almost kind of like the last links, really. And so bearing that in mind, I'm going to go to the next slide. This is our math, and it's the same criteria. We had the typical growth, the grade level movement. And you can see, though, that the performance on ESBA and math for our multilingual learners is significantly better. And, you know, the content is, may not be as text-heavy, and there is computation in there. All right? And so even if, even if they are not proficient in English, or that is not their first language, math is math. Okay? And so they're, that's figured in there as well. So, want to go to the next slide, Adam? All right. And so now, we're going to kind of, okay, that's where we were at the end of last year. Now, looking at the beginning of this year, we looked at how comparable the multilingual students are from last year to this year. And so the blue on this chart is last year's fifth graders, and the gold, East Haven colors, okay, is this year's fifth graders. And you can see, so 7% of our fifth grade multilingual learners are on grade level. 21% this year are one grade level below, and 72% this year are two or more grade levels below. Okay? And you can see the comparison to last year, and very similar. Okay? Want to go to the next slide, please? And this is what it looks like in math. And you can see it's significantly different in math. This year, we are starting with 0% of our students on grade level in math for multilingual learners in fifth grade. And, you know, is it a challenge? Yes, but I also see it as an opportunity, because, you know, the groundwork is clearly laid out for us. And so we're all geared up and ready to meet this challenge. 43% are one below and 57% are two or more grade levels below. Again, you know, it's data that, it's real, and you got to look at it, and you got to react to it. And so that's exactly what we are doing. So I go to the next slide. So these are our action steps that we are taking. We have a lot of collaboration between our multilingual teacher and just about every other facet of adult that you can think of in the building. She has become an integral part of almost every instructional decision in the classrooms. We just went to the science of reading with the multilingual teachers, all right? And in math, we are having our multilingual teacher work closely with our math coach for the accelerated math model, Adam, which I think you're going to talk about in a little bit. All right? So you'll learn about what we're doing with that in particular. And for our literacy, let me see, we're implementing the district literacy plan with small group focus. Laura, we're also using the templates in the lesson plans, all right? Building-wide, with tiered instruction. Our ML, our multilingual teacher is attending all of our grade level meetings for both reading and math, our monthly data meetings and the continuum meetings, the continuum data meetings with the Hill. And I think it's really an important and integral piece of the planning process, because every classroom has a significant number of multilingual learners. And at these grade level meetings, we're talking about instruction, and we're talking about lesson designs. And she has a lens that she brings, and an experience that she brings, that incorporates almost like a universal access type of instruction for the multilingual learner into the tier one everyday instruction. And it's also critical for her to be there, because that's where we're laying out the foundations until the next grade level meeting. And so she knows what's happening in the classroom. So if the kids are pulled for support, there's a seamless transition of the content between one and the next. Okay? What's happening here, the kids are not missing anything if they need to be pulled up for a more intensive group setting. And we also have, and almost on, kind of on its own volition, we have a lot of multilingual learning family engagement. And I think Parent Square has helped a lot with that, and I've received really, really great feedback. I know there is, you know, and rightfully so, there's been a lot of emphasis, I guess, you know, on our, for our Spanish-speaking, a lot of support for our Spanish-speaking families, but we have a lot of other languages. And the parents have been very appreciative of actually moving to that platform. It's a kind of a, I don't know if it was a small, it was a small switch for me. I don't know how it was on the backend, but it's, we're seeing a lot of positive results from that as well.
Thank you, Paul. Up next, we'll have Julie Church with Mamawgwin.
Well, thank you for having us. Just sitting here, listening to the other principals speaking, I just have to reflect on a moment that the work that goes into analyzing the data from last year, the beginning-of-the-year data, and using all of that to make the decisions we make every day to provide the best possible instruction for our students, is something I wish you can be a fly on the wall for, because it is, it's intense. And when we drill down to these very specific things, we're looking to celebrate small areas and look for areas where we can replicate. But the discussion that we have with what we uncover is really the meat of what education is. So I just had to say that, as I was listening, it was so valuable. I'm going to speak, as others have spoken, a little bit to the Smarter Balance assessment. Those assessment results are from last year, and that information helps us realize where we had successes in our instructional practices, for things that we might want to replicate. Even though the information is used for the state, it's a little outdated for planning direct instruction. But it does tell us where we had some areas of success that we might want to replicate. So one area of success that we saw at Mamawgwin was with our fourth grade students. Our fourth grade in particular, all of the students received both tier one whole-group instruction and small-group instruction in ELA, very consistently, and in collaboration with the reading coach and the interventionist. The planning templates that were, that other building administrators had spoken to from the Hill for Literacy were used to deliver that instruction, so there was consistency and fidelity across all classes. The whole-group instruction included direct instruction in the area of phonics, vocabulary... The whole group instruction included direct instruction in the area of phonics, vocabulary, and comprehension. The grouping of students is absolutely amazing with a model that's put out by Continuum, and it's research-based, and it helps us plan specifically based on how a student answers the questions at the beginning of the year assessment. It really pinpoints their area of need, so we can feel confident in the fact that the placement is decided upon literally by the support of some research-based programming. We did have the additional layer of wind time last year, which at Mamawgwin this year we do not have. So without the additional wind time, we are taking that small group time and making it sacred. So our small group instruction in both Language Arts and Math is an area that cannot be pulled from, interrupted, and is supported. So even though we are not all hands on deck, we do have support personnel attached to each classroom to make sure that there are enough bodies to meet the needs of the students. So our reading specialist might be pushing in, our EL staff may be pushing in to support the lesson, and we are training parent educators as well to carry out the lessons and the framework from the Hill for Literacy. So, oh, let me speak to these numbers here. So addressing these priority standards, you can see that we had, from the average percent of target achieved in grade four, we were slightly higher in than East Haven, the overall in East Haven at Mamawgwin, and, sorry, slightly higher than the state, and higher than the state average specifically in grade four. And what I had just spoken to are all the things that we feel are, were put in place to make that growth occur, and which we are definitely looking to replicate. We have an area of opportunity which also surfaced where we saw a decline in, a decrease in our, in our scale score points. And that area of opportunity is in alignment with the area of opportunity that Adam spoke to earlier regarding writing, research, and inquiry. This is an area when we sit down and meet as a team, at our grade level teams. It was an area that the teachers were really looking for support with, with the writing components that were currently in place. And we are fortunate to be implementing the six plus one program this year as a pilot. And we strongly feel that that's going to be what helps us to shift that subset. I too, coming like Christina, coming to this role from a previous math coach, I love to dig into math scores. And I also like to see areas of success specifically to a particular claim. In reviewing the particular claim problem solving and modeling, which was a focus for the, the math coach in the building, it was also a focus through the wind block of embedded, it was embedded into the wind block. There was a lot of success in grades three, four, and five. There was an increase across all three. They're not nearly where we want them to be yet, but the, we're on a trajectory of an improvement, and that's, that's a positive. The area of opportunity, again, ties into district goals with communicating reasoning in grades three and five had a decline. Communicating reasoning in grade four increased. This is an area where the teacher and the math coach worked together to implement number talks, embedding this practice into the curriculum, using the solvent share from the math block, the math programming. And students used, student-designed rubrics that would self-assess their, communicating their reasoning in fourth grade. And we look to spread that, not only to grades three and five, but also to incorporate that into all grade levels this year with the support of the math, math coach. My next step, next steps. So for literacy, we are doing a backwards design model. It's fascinating. Our coach meets, here's where we want to be successful with our tier one instruction, what do we need to do to get there? And we are using both core text and grade level text in, with our Ready Gen program, our Language Arts program. We're utilizing the six plus one traits of writing to address those specific targets in the writing and research claim. In math, we're looking to replicate the practices that have been successful, leveraging number talks and strategies from those number talks to improve communicating reasoning in all of our grade levels, replicating that self-assessment rubric where, again, for all grade levels and not just smarter balanced tested ones. And then using the acceleration model that Paul has recently spoken to, and I know that Adam's going to speak to, that allows all students, our exceptional learners are on the same, at the same table with all students, learning all the same content.
Thank you so much, Julie. Did you want to call out the BOY I Ready data really quickly?
Oh, yeah, you took it, so I didn't know if we were short on time. So, oh, the I Ready data from the beginning of the year, that's the data that we can use for this year. So when I said we look at Smarter Balance to see what our, how our instructional practices were for last year, our I Ready data shows us this year what our students are currently doing and where we can take them. It was very nice to see that our mathematics at the, of our two or more grade levels below, which is that printed red, at the beginning of last school year, 20% of our students were there in grade three, and at the beginning of this year, 8% of our students are there. So shrinking the gap, or shrinking that number and shifting into areas where we can have a stronger instructional focus and not filling foundational skills helps us, and in order to be successful with this, that's where we're using that acceleration model. And again, for BOY reading from last year to this year, looking at those numbers of students who are significantly below grade level and shrinking that. So we're starting off at a better place, giving us more opportunity for growth.
Thank you. All right. And finally, Chris Brown will share some noticings from Tuttle.
I've split my presentation up into three specific parts. The very first part I'd like to look at is where we were. So it's a glance back to the 2023, 2024 data. And I know you've heard a lot of different measures for tonight, and I chose to stay focused on the I Ready reading, which is a priority for us at our school. One thing that I wanted to talk about is cohesiveness and coherence and unity of instruction. When we look at the learners that we have in front of us, we'd like to make sure that the programming we put in place, the delivery of instruction, is reaching all those different learners and the needs that they have. So I chose to pull one, it mimics a little bit of what Paul had started out with, for my multilingual learners. At Tuttle School, we're over 80 of our students right now that are multilingual learners that, that have some experience with that. So I think it's really important for us to look that that group of learners is showing the same growth rate as all of the rest of the students. So the two bars that I have there, the lower is the red we started with, and the upper is the red that we ended with, it shows the same pattern of decrease in deficiency. So we have some students who came with a skill set that they needed some support with. We want to make sure we're growing all those learners at the same rate. I'd like to talk for a moment about discrepancy. When we look really specifically at the data, we have kind of a discrepancy threshold, the five to eight percent, that's a little bit of a window that says, hey, within here, we can, we can understand that some learners are growing at different rates, but outside of those boundaries, we would start to be more concerned that there is, in fact, something emerging that we would want to look at. On the topic of coherence and unity, I also snuck in on the bottom right-hand corner our ESBA summative science result from last year. I think Adam had mentioned in his presentation that it's a cumulative assessment. It actually asks students to be tested in grade five, but demonstrate their proficiency on topics that were learned in grades three, four, and five. So in order for us to achieve that rate of growth, and this was one of our higher-performing areas, it has to be a movement that's not just across a particular grade level band, but an up and down as well. So a lot of our teachers will work together on what gets prepared for one grade level that supports the development of those topics as they move to the next grade level, and of course, in grade five, when they get assessed. Okay, my middle slide is where we are. I wanted to point out our current data, which is, again, an I Ready from BOY, our beginning-of-year data, and look at where we're beginning to work with our learners. We can see that there's many students that need our levels of support, that they're going to need to grow. However, I wanted to point out, we get really specific with where our learners are coming to us, either in a cohorted group, as Adam had done earlier, or as a grade level-specific group. And I just want to highlight my grade three right now. It is a place where there is a pocket of a lot of success. It indicates that we have 28% of our students who are coming into the third grade level in the fall, well poised to be successful in their third grade year with the amount of skills that they've amassed. Our same number for last year, at the start of the year, was in 8%. So we're starting to see some growth and some maintenance of the skill sets that the students have without any backwards movement. They're starting off in a better spot, and therefore, it allows us to approach them differently as learners. Now, my slide number three. This is the one where I wanted to spend most of my time. It's where we're heading. It's the things that are happening in the building that are supporting those students and the growth that they need. So we want to look at our whole system, and I think people did a great job of pointing out the way we work with our data. I wanted to talk about the way we work with our resources and our staff for a minute. We have different individuals who have certain levels of expertise that can help us leverage some of the curriculum and the learners' needs. We want to get those individuals to share those expertises with people who can replicate that model. So for example, I heard science of reading was a priority. We have Hill for Literacy that comes and supports many of our teachers. Then the coach at my building level becomes an expert in that as well. Then the coach begins to work with all the reading teachers to make sure that the decoding and the fluency and the templates are followed, to make sure we're following the most efficient models of getting that instruction to our students. And now, at this point, we're also training our second layer of educators, that's our parent educators, to use the same type of templating and the same type of small group instruction. And what that's going to do is it's going to give our students more than one opportunity per day to encounter a high-leverage situation. So they have a primary individualized, their core classroom teacher, there might be an instructional paraprofessional who gives them a second one. They might also get a third dose of some specific skill set that they need in order to be successful. And all of those agencies within the building are working together. So we're capturing the data that each of those students has, frequency, duration assessments, and the skills that they achieve, and share that across the board with all those different tiers of people providing that instruction. We'd like to make sure that the most appropriate person is delivering the highest leverage instruction that we can, and we want to try to make sure our students are getting that across the board. Bringing me all the way back around to our, our end view, which is to look for that coherence, to make sure that we're tracking student progress, make sure we're looking at what is working specifically for our students. And this year, both of my coaches are helping support a student-centered coaching model, which has us looking very specifically at student data and asking why or why not was this student successful? Is there a different approach that we can engage with to see if we can either overcome a barrier or present the information in a different way? That's the end of my third slide, but I'd like to land on that note and just reflect back on all of the elementary principals who went before me. That coherence actually exists across our team as well. We do meet regularly to look at problems of practice with administration, with the team of ourselves, and to talk about what works at each building. Obviously, each of our buildings has some differences and some similarities, but we try to collaborate ourselves on what structures are working in what different situations so we, as a unit, can also look to shift to make sure that we're providing that same level of support.
Thank you, Chris. So I wanted to bring us back as we start to wrap up to take a look at some of these BOY data points back at the district level before we conclude with some action steps that we're taking in concert with the ones mentioned at the building level. So first off, when we look at math and we think about our beginning-of-the-year standpoint, we're really centering that in I Ready as an internal measure. So what we want to take a look at are, again, some of those rough cohorts. So the first data you look at at the bottom are this year's third, fourth, and fifth graders, and where they're starting off the year. And we want to compare that to, you know, we have a lot of movement in and out of district, but in general, where were they last year when they were second graders, when they were third graders, when they were fourth graders? And I do want to draw attention to an area here that is interesting to note, and that is to see where we are seeing some nice reduction, again, in that student population that is two or more grade levels below by the time they're coming into fifth grade. I also call this out to highlight that we do see some stagnation in areas that we're also paying attention to. Although, that does become a little more typical, again, with math, because this is assessing their knowledge of grade level standards at the beginning of the year prior to instruction. But again, we're really paying attention to how we're narrowing some of those learning gaps that show in the red. When we go to reading, we have more measures that we can take a look at, so not just I Readys, but again, back to DIBELS. This year, we've added M-Class vocab and M-Class RAN, Rapid Automatic Naming in connection to requirements at the state level to increase those universal screenings. So I want to start with why we talk about measuring decoding. So with this, an important measure that we're looking at in early elementary is nonsense word fluency, words recoding correctly. It's a mouthful. But what that means is a word like "rab". It doesn't mean anything. It's nonsense. But why we look at that is because students can't memorize this from conversations at home or in books that they've read. Instead, they have to rely on what they know about letter-sound correspondence and the way the English language works. So a student sees that, and they might sound out "at", "rab". And that lets us know that they're identifying those correct letter sounds, and they're able to recode it into a complete word. And so you can see a couple of examples of that. And where we really monitor that, again, is early elementary. So here, we have a look back on last year's first graders. So the first bar is looking at their beginning-of-the-year in the fall, where they were mid-year in winter, where they were at the end of the year in spring. But what I really want to draw our attention to is, are our students retaining the learning year after year? Because that is a trend where we want to make sure we're not constantly starting over. So you might remember that this year's first graders ended kindergarten 75 proficient on grade level at a composite level, and it was like our highest scores to date under DIBELS eighth. We can see when we take a look at this, last year's first graders on the left to this year's first graders and where they're starting off. We see a little bit of expansion in that above grade level, but we're seeing a 6% expansion of students proficiency. And when we look to the red, we go from 28% of students who started first grade last year well below to only 17% this year. And that's an exciting trend that we're seeing across the district. We also look at DIBELS across all of elementary, and I want to again point out that increasingly automatic, and that's where fluency comes into play. Can students apply their decoding ability in a manner that's fluent? Because we know that fluency has a strong connection to their ability to comprehend and analyze text. So here's an example from fourth grade. Teachers are going to give students a passage on grade level. They're going to monitor accuracy and also the speed at which they produce for them. And so looking at fourth grade, again, this shows fourth grade's progression last year, beginning of the year, winter, middle of the year, spring at the end of the year. And again, we take a look, and we can compare last year's fourth graders to this year's fourth graders. And the difference in our on and above- And the difference in our on and above grade level with fluency is stark. Now, this is not measuring comprehension, that's the next level. But we need fluency in place in order for students to be able to read confidently and with that higher level comprehension. When we look to I ready, we see some positive trends there as well. Again, we're looking at those rough cohorts. I ready, we see a little more stabilization in the on grade level because of the cyclical nature of ELA standards. But again, as we think about tracking their progress, when we look to this year's third graders. As second graders, they started the year sixteen percent proficient. This year across the district, our third graders thirty percent proficient, and that's really exciting trend. We can also take a look at this year's fourth graders and where they're coming in. We don't see the same growth in the green on grade level, but we do see a significant reduction happening in the students that are well be below that target. So we kind of monitor at both ends. I also want to highlight an area that is cause for us to ensure that we're providing the right supports, and that's at fifth grade. We saw a significant expansion actually in a reduction in the students that were three or more grade levels below. But we see more students two or more grade levels below. So this is really mapping on to what teachers in fifth grade are sharing about the need to really ensure students are understanding the curriculum. And how that might impact pacing, not just in ELA, but in other content areas as well. So this takes us to some next steps. You've heard acceleration math model, so I get to talk about it, it's great. I have to give a shout out to our math coaches. Many of them engaged in the science of reading and they were eager over the past couple of years to find the science of math. And the fact is, is that funding for early numeracy research is not at the same level across the decades as it has been for early literacy. But what the research does show is that acceleration models work best. That's where we ensure that students are getting grade level content and that we are filling learning gaps if they exist alongside. So that's why it's an acceleration where we're looking at those prerequisites in the scope of the grade level content. We can't do one and then the other because we just widen the gap. So what this has looked like is the work is underway. It's identifying those major concept clusters that cut across to grade levels that, and we're basing it in the standards, not the curriculum, so that it can really map on to any curriculum. Important as well, we talked about is the aligning of guidance around how to cycle some of this instruction. Time is precious, but we know that students need repeated exposure in various ways. And so some of the teachers engaged in a number talk pathway, for example, for professional learning. It's a great example for this work. And our fifth grade team is looking at this in two weeks with measurement and data I mentioned, as well as geometry standards. The next action step is we are seeing some returns after intensive investment in early literacy. But we also need to think about that connection to students working in grade level text. And we heard, Julie, you spoke to that about like kind of alternating students working in leveled or decodables, but also the core content. So that is really emphasizing small group instruction. We do not have win in place at the same level and in, or in place in many of our schools. And so we really are analyzing the impact of the loss of those thirty minutes and thinking about how we do hold sacred that differentiated targeted tier one instruction that every child needs to grow. So that looks like shoring up decoding, but we've gotten a lot of great feedback from our teachers around utilizing their feedback to inform fluency resources. And how we practice fluency in grade level text, especially if there's an opportunity to preview what the class is going to be reading. And that builds confidence and that's a really supportive structure that can be applied for our multilingual learners as well as our exceptional learners. And we will be engaging in district wide training for the final phase of our small group lesson plans this year around vocab and comprehension. It's really fluency vocab and comprehension that are translating most directly into language comprehension showing up in text comprehension. So we can't ignore that important area, especially as we look at our data with our upper grades. The other component that's been mentioned is teachers for a number of years have mentioned needing some more clear guidance with writing resources. We've backwards mapped, Lisa and I working in tandem to make sure that we have a K-12 alignment with the writing framework. So that students are exposed to the same language and the ways of thinking about writing that will carry them through East Haven. Included in this is carving out explicit time for explicit instruction in writing, but also a chance to build student stamina. And then to connect that back into the content areas because writing should be happening across all content areas. And Laura talked about this, but we're really in a unique position to leverage our assets where we have many students in pre-K before they come to us in kindergarten. Especially with the pushback of school start age this year that'll go in effect for everyone next year. So we've been working to look at how we're emphasizing oral language, early literacy before students come to us in kindergarten. Laura talked about ensuring foundations was in place at Deer Run, and that is now coming onboard at Overbrook. Additionally, all of our Overbrook lead teachers are participating in the science of reading training this year. So we're excited to see how those foundations prior to kindergarten can maybe shift the needle. Because we spend much of kindergarten in all intensive areas for students. But if we can get some awareness with letter sounds, early print, that can be exciting. And our final area is expanding opportunities for content area literacy and background. Students need to immerse themselves as well in science, social studies beyond literacy and math. And think about the ways in which those areas are connected. This is really where they build background that supports their reading. It begins with a K-five adoption. Again, educators have advocated that they need more guidance within social studies. A lot of time gets put into creating resources and leads to some inconsistency. So we have twelve classroom teachers signed on for a pilot that'll begin at the beginning of December. To take a look at an inquiry based program that has an action oriented aspect with their learning that we're very excited about. And thinking about the ways that that creates an interdisciplinary focus. This is happening at a great time too, because Connecticut has adopted new social study standards and that needs to be remapped. We're not ignoring science, but we're going to sustain our science materials. One piece of feedback we hear, especially in early elementary, but I think it's true throughout, is that our science kits really take a lot to dig into. And that can sometimes impact the amount of time students get in this critical area of study. The materials are great, but do we have time to use them? So a change that we've made, we have brought, we're no longer outsourcing the science kit refill out of district. So that will be a cost savings as we move forward, but more important is the benefit to teaching and learning. Where we're no longer on a timetable of when a kit arrives or when a kit gets picked up. But we can make sure that instruction is matching student need and supporting teachers efficacy with it. And then finally is this idea of specialized. We've departmentalized all of our fifth grade students and classes across the schools this year. And that is an opportunity to look at some consistent instruction. And that means that students are moving between teachers for different content areas, a little bit of a precursor to middle school. We're also looking at how we bring the structure down specifically in science and social studies to fourth grade. We're doing it a little bit different at every school and like Chris spoke to, it's an opportunity for us to stay in connection and thinking about how we are learning from which students, which model students are responding to. So taken together, it's three robust areas, but they are connected. And they're all supported with an underpinning of high quality resources and practices. A reframing of professional learning to think about how we are really leveraging colleagues to learn with and from each other. This year, we've been intentional of carving out time in our district days for grade level teams to work together face to face across buildings. It's a step in the right direction, but we're looking at ways to amplify that even further. And finally, this connects with our professional growth and support plan for educators that was recently adopted. And thinking about how frequent and actionable feedback supports all of these endeavors at the classroom level. And finally, I don't mean to scare you with this, but this is how I make sense of it. And it's looking ahead the next four years of where we stand with curricular resources. I did a lot of sense making with this, this summer, and we want to think about how we map it out. So we have a number of programs that are not going to be supported moving forward due to updates or out of print. We also have legislation at the state level, we've had a waiver with, with our core reading program. But we have a lot that we need to bring onboard and start to space out because speaking as a former classroom teacher. Dual implementations at this, within a year is a lot for educators. So we're looking at this year, it's been talked about, we're in the implementation phase with the consistent writing framework and resources to support. We will have a pilot in social studies and we're moving into that pre-K foundations implementation at Overbrook. This will continue then across the next years where we will have an opportunity to space these out. But I wanted to give a look ahead about how we are getting into a more sustainable cyclical pattern with our curricular resources in the years ahead. So thank you. A lot of information, but appreciate your attention and a shout out to our building administrators. And I know that those were collaborative efforts with your teams back at site, so a thank you to them as well.
We can start the regular meeting and under the superintendent's report, go through some questions.
Okay. That, and yeah, I have a few questions that come to mind too. And I'm also willing to go back and write them down and then send them in and maybe have another mini work session to talk about it. I mean, I know we're going to the sixth, twelve, November twelfth, didn't I read?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we need some time to talk about it. I have a whole bunch of questions. And I also want to talk about support staff. I know Beginning of the Year, testing has already happened, I'm sure those results are done. And we talked about looking at that and numbers per school to see about allocating, making sure there was. Support staff is allocated correctly across the district based on needs, not on number of students in the school. So I want to talk about that, and I have a lot of questions.
I do too, so I mean, you know, we can start something off if everybody wants to during that time, but do you think it will take longer than?
I do too. I do too.
We'll give you some time then to digest the information, come up with some questions, maybe send us some of the questions, thoughts in advance. So if we need to gather other data and/or bring additional resources or materials, we could do that.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Appreciate your time.
Yes, thank you. You know, a lot of work goes into those presentations.
A test is a test that a child takes on a given day, a given time, and you know, the whole child, we have to look at the whole child, where they're at.
If we're going to comment, I'm going to comment.
I'm just saying.
I can say too, if you can say.
Okay.
Okay.
We just got to decide if we're discussing it now or we're discussing it later.
Test on one day to decide a student's future, you're right, that's a problem. But we got twelve hundred and fifty snapshots that we use to guide this school district, and that's different. Twelve hundred and fifty kids take that test. We don't use it to decide what we're doing with one student. It's a tool on what we do with this district. Am I crazy thinking that?
No, I think that both of those comments are true. I think that we have to use the data to look at the trends and how that's informing our action steps. I'm also really excited that this time next year, Stephanie Rebellini's been reworking our panorama survey. To align it with the vision of the graduate attributes. And I think it'll be an interesting opportunity to bring into more conversation the whole child as well. Where we're looking at hard data around these tests that, and I agree, Tom, it's, it's important to look at what we're doing in terms of our program in district wide. But it's also an opportunity to see trend in terms of how students perceive themselves as learners. So it kind of can be a more holistic snapshot. So that'll go into place this year and that can be a part moving forward.
I'm going to say a couple of other things since we opened up the comment waterfall. There's a couple of other things I've been thinking about. Erica, I like the way it seems you're separating data with kids that have been with us since the beginning. And kids that have moved into the district. I think that's enlightening. I also, you know, in recent years, I spent some time in math class in the tunnel school. And when you say there's kids that are two and three grade levels below. I, I don't see how you catch that kid up by leaving them in that class. I just don't believe it because they're so far behind the things you're teaching in that grade level. They, they don't have a chance to comprehend. So what do we do about that? Should kids be placing grade level by proficiency instead of age when they move into our district? I, I don't know. But I know the little time I sent, I sat in math class, you can pick them up. That, you know, you have kids over here that are at grade level, you have kids that don't even understand two plus two equals four. And you're like, wow, we're in trouble. So when you say two and three grade levels behind, I said to myself, how is a teacher going to make that up in one year? We can't possibly expect that to happen, can we?
Did you run? We, we do see a number of examples where that does happen. I think it speaks to, again, we're seeing promise with that acceleration model because it already has, we've started to see it tested out in certain spaces. So this is really about expanding that district wide. Because we are seeing that promise, but it is a year after year commitment. And I think it goes back to some of the points raised around not just within a grade level cohesion, but thinking about how that maps on year after year within a building. Or even across, because you're right, the impact is significant. And it is why, you know, we're, we're targeting in that area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's where Adam talked about acceleration a little bit. And you know, I appreciate your point on how, how do we expect a teacher to catch up a kid that's three grade levels behind in one year?
You can't see.
It has to be a trajectory over multiple years. And that's where the smarter balance assessment is just a benchmark. Embedded within that and our district assessments are ways we can measure growth to ensure that that trajectory is on the way to meeting benchmark. And that may take several years. And maybe we can bring some of those smarter balance trend charts that show the scale score movement over the course of the different grade levels.
Your target growth versus your stretch growth.
Yep.
And that's not something that this necessarily dives into deeply on the individual level. But there are those kids that are making big strides individually.
I think we saw a slide where one, one out of every three students were, were meeting their stretch growth in a particular school or grade level. And that's pretty significant because two years meeting stretch growth.
That's where you get your catch up.
On grade level, yeah.
And it's tricky, it is, and I think small grouping and real knowledgeable, small grouping and access to that. I don't know, I think time on task, I think time for classrooms, there's a lot of things that I want to ask about too, that, that really have a life and have impact.
And in terms of your point on students who are with us for a longer period of times, you know, that's sort of, it's, it's hard for us. It's validating in some way relative to our curriculum and our programming and our instruction. But in reality, we still have to educate the kids that come to us with significant gaps who don't have, who, we didn't have a chance to lay that foundation and try to figure out how to handle that.
Maybe we should receive those kids differently. I guess that's a line start to think.
Yeah, thinking about what does this mean for the progression of year after year instruction? And how do we reorient our thinking when we are receiving a child?
Does that student have to be placed in an age thing? I guess that's what I'm thinking.
Something to think about.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Are we, so we adjourn this?
Sure. Yep.
I apologize for being a little slow.
Good evening. Let's just start the meeting and stand for the call.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
I believe Michelle is on. Sorry, while she gets that out, I think roll call attendance.
Roll call.
Ms. DePalma?
Yes.
Ms. Delongo?
Here.
Ms. Hennessy?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Putney?
Here.
Ms. Santiago?
Here.
Mr. Stacy?
Here.
Ms. Torello?
Here.
And Dr. Dillusha.
Here, sorry. I was muted.
Okay. Is Michelle, would you like to give a report or anything? Michelle, do you want to share a report this evening?
No, I did not.
Okay. Any reports for committees? I know that maybe Erica, because I missed part of it, the negotiations for the tech? In process?
Yes, so we are wrapping up, I think.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I got some stuff, just real quick.
Okay.
Real quick. So, this is kind of exciting. Voice soccer qualified for the C I A C playoffs for the first time in 20 years.
Wow, that's awesome.
Football is three and two. They've got a bye week this week and will face Amity's next Friday. I think it's November 15th is Veterans Night at football game. They'll be honoring veterans. It's also Senior Night. Girls Swimming, they're getting prepared for the S E C meet. They had a meet with Branford, I was just telling Erica. We won almost every event, East Haven, it's East Haven, New Haven, Sacred Heart. Unfortunately, Branford got seconds and thirds. So when you add up the points, so unusual, the meet ended in a tie.
Wow.
So, you know, we're still going. Cross-country will compete in the States this weekend and middle school sports are now wrapping up. That's it for sports, athletics.
Okay. I'm sorry, was there any correspondence?
None.
Okay. Superintendent's report? No report this evening. Finance, invoices and purchase orders?
Just any questions since we do not have a subcommittee report. Other than that, nothing to report.
Any questions?
I have a few questions.
Okay.
So, the solar maintenance. So, we're still paying solar maintenance?
Yep.
Do we, are we under a new contract now, though?
That solar maintenance contract goes back 10 years ago from the older panels. We'll still pay that until the newer panels, that project is completed within the next year.
So, we have a few more years of paying that?
Probably, probably a year.
Okay. All right, that's what I was wondering about. Why is Deer Run water usage so high? It's twice, it's twice of everybody else. Two times as much as everybody else.
So, we, I will...
Even the middle school, it's twice the middle school.
So, Deer Run has been having some plumbing problems in the building.
Oh.
It may involve a more extensive project over winter break, but we've had many clogs over the time of school. I mean, there's no explanation for it, it's just the piping in the back, the newer end, the upper wing. When things are getting flushed, there's not, there's not enough pressure to push through the line. So, we think it's correlated between the two, that there's something causing this problem. So, it's being investigated now by the water company. They're bringing in cameras to see where the issue is.
Would that cause more usage of water?
Well, it could be something that's consistently running.
Okay, okay.
That we're trying to find to see if it's reducing the pressure during the action rather than a consistent flow. So, it is. But it may, it may be something that requires an extensive repair over winter break potentially.
Okay. And then, the copier usage.
Yep.
Our copier usage is more than the lease, our overage is more than the lease.
It's still big picture cheaper than our prior package.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, the lease involves very little clicks on the machine and we're paying more on the usage side, but the rate on the usage is cheaper than it goes incorporated into the lease of the machine.
Okay. So, my other question is, do staff members have access codes to the machines?
So, they are, it's tied to their badge.
So, have, has anyone ever looked at that? Because with everyone on Chromebooks now, I was surprised that the overage is so much.
So, students have access in their libraries? So, when they're here, they can print to the localized printers that you see?
Well, that's one school. What about the elementary schools? I mean, what are they copying?
So, the staff, we run reports monthly with tech where we can run them by, by machine, by building. And it's all based on who badges in to see what's being printed. So, if we have an excessive month, we are able to see what building is the issue, honestly, problem with the issue, and then we could drill down to see what staff is.
Some of the schools are really, I mean, obviously, I know the high school and the middle school has a lot more employees, so you expect that, but...
We do have the capability of throttling that down. We haven't gotten to that point yet, but we could put a limit on, you know, if we, if it became an excessive problem, we do have the capabilities through paper cut to say, you know, 500, say, you know, you get shut off and you'd ask permission to print further, like to ask a request for more pages per month. So, if it does become a larger problem, we do have that capability now.
That's a lot of money a month. You add that times, you multiply that times nine.
Plus paper.
It's a lot of money.
And people do struggle with, you know, how many copies to make and just make sure there's enough and then there's an excess and it does, it can get out of hand.
Sometimes I think they're copying things that they don't need to copy.
Right, and just to even send a general message out there to say that we're over on this and if we could cut back, that money can be used elsewhere. But, I mean, sometimes you have kids making full-blown pictures of something too that gets thrown away, you know, in two seconds or something. I'm not saying some of it's very much, you know...
Absolutely.
But it can happen, right? We had to...
We can send communication out, though. That's easy enough.
Something, just to say.
Marion, I'm sorry.
I just, I don't want to, you know, I, the teachers have a lot of restrictions. I mean, I don't want to restrict them from printing stuff either.
No, that's what I'm saying. Just a maybe, just a warning, not a warning even, just a...
I just want to look at it to see if, if it's, you know, it's really necessary. I mean, back in the day when, you know, we had to copy everything. But now, with, with, you know, technology, that's not the case.
I know, like, my son had a packet last night of math, which you, you know, they want to see the work. So, you know, I don't know if more, like, math or, I don't know. I, if there's a trend or a person or whatever, but...
We can, we can, we won't know, like, what it is, but we can dig into building specific to the staff who is using the combs.
We've been in and out of buildings and more recently, we had a walkthrough with the State Department of Education as part of our Alliance District work. And I actually commented to some of the team members, like, it was actually really refreshing and nice to walk through elementary K, you know, and middle, we walked through the middle school and elementary schools, K through eight, and not see kids solely on Chromebooks. They had pencils in their hands, they had some paper, they were writing, they were working in groups. And so, I think in some instances, given some of our station work and our accelerated math work, we are using more paper for very intentional instructional purposes.
Okay.
I made a comment to the team, like, that was super refreshing because I feel like we're seeing kids less in front of screens, which means there's more dialogue going on. Kids are writing, they're sharing pens, they're interacting more. And it seems like a more active learning environment than passive learning environment.
Yeah, and there's also so much printing done for P P Ts and getting things ready where everyone has a packet. You need, you know, those are requirements that have to be handed out and things like that.
You know, that's not really what I was referring to.
I'm not surprised, actually, about that.
Yeah.
But we could look into it further.
All right.
I also agree. It, it is refreshing to see because even, you get so many, this isn't working, the plug's not working, this, can I go downstairs? And we had to, like, put a kibosh on a lot of that because kids were leaving the classroom to go get their Chromebook fixed too. So, in some ways, like you said, in small groups and stuff, when you don't need the Chromebook. But turning something in and doing something on the Chromebook, you know, there's a time for it. But there's a lot less going on now with it.
That's all I have, R.J.
I got a quick question. And I'm not questioning the cost or anything, it's on page 10 in the first set. I'm just wondering what this was for. We bought a love seat, a guest chair, and a folding table. Little later on in the, there's something about a bookcase and it says for a central office. I just want to know what this was for. Page 10, the first item.
Oh, I think the bookcase was for the S E L coach.
Yeah, no, I'm not worried about that. I'm worried about, I'm saying that was specifically said where it was going. This is about a lera, love seat, a lera, one guest chair, a lera folding table with...
Sounds like an office.
...in delivery. What do we buy?
Sounds like an office.
I just wanted to...
No, so do I. It says other purchase services adult ed. So, we can check. I believe they purchased...
Oh, where do you see that adult ed? I didn't see that.
The account that it was charged to, other purchase services adult ed.
Oh, yeah.
I do, I will verify this, I'm not certain, but I do believe in moving furniture. That furniture broke.
Okay.
So, it was a replacement for that, but I will, I will verify that.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions on invoices and purchase orders? Okay, so, we move on to the acceptance of meeting minutes. Are there, is there anyone who is not? So, we don't have to vote, we can just move on and accept those minutes. And, audience of citizens. And I believe, we don't have any more? Okay. New business. I believe the first one is 6.1, discussion and possible action to approval of Academy out-of-state field trip at the end of the year, Fenway Park. I'll let somebody...
Make a motion to approve the East Haven Academy field trip to Fenway in the Boston Museum.
Second. Any discussion, questions?
Can I be a chaperone?
I missed that trip.
Looks like a good trip, yeah.
Yeah, it's fun.
All right.
Even though the Yankees are going to the Wells here, okay. Roll call, vote? Ms. DePalma?
Yes.
Ms. Delongo?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Ms. Torello?
Yes.
Dr. Dillusha?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. Okay. 6.2, discussion and possible action of the East Haven Marching Band Nationals out-of-state field trip to MetLife on 11/2/24.
I will make a motion to approve the East Haven High School Marching Band Nationals out-of-state field trip to MetLife Stadium in New Jersey on 11/2/24.
Second.
Questions? Okay, roll call vote. Ms. DePalma?
Yes.
Ms. Delongo?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Ms. Torello?
Yes.
Dr. Dillusha?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. Okay, 6.3 is discussion and possible action and revision of policy and regulation 3280.1, fundraising activities. Any, do we need clarification?
I think there's just the additions of the date and then the live animal prohibited as prizes. I think that would be the only change.
That actually follows with new Connecticut state law.
Yeah, thank you for that.
I will make a motion to approve Policy 3280.1, fundraising activities.
Second.
Wait for the discussion?
No.
Any discussions or questions? No? Good. Sorry, Erica. Ms. DePalma?
Yes.
Ms. Delongo?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Ms. Torello?
Yes.
Dr. Dillusha?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. 6.4 is the discussion and possible action on the approval of the Increasing Educator Diversity Plan. I recall this, is this in addition to something we already approved or we didn't approve it? We just got to...
You had approved it. We submitted it with the first deadline for the state. It came back to us for some feedback, so we're bringing it back to the board in general, go through it a little bit on some of the revisions that we made so we can resubmit for the November 1st deadline for the revisions.
Okay. So, you wanted to... You want to make a motion first?
I'll make a motion to approve the Increasing Educator Diversity Plan.
Second. Now, you're going to explain some of it?
Yes.
Yes, so, included in your packets, I did provide you with the feedback that we received from the state as they gave us a conditional approval and would like, and wanted us to resubmit some revisions. So, basically, what they wanted us to do is break it down into a little bit finer so that something that we can measure and relate to and see the progression on it. So, in regards to the recruitment, we have three steps. One is to establish partnerships with colleges and universities, especially those with a more diversified student population. Right now, we are currently working with Quinnipiac University. We have six, we currently have six Quinnipiac residents that are doing a co-teaching model with highly qualified teachers within the district. They're here for the full year. So, we're hoping to expand that going forward. We are also going to, we want to match the diversity of our staff to the population of our students. The best way to do that is do outreach to our families because obviously, if our students with diversity, we can get our families with diversity working for us. So, we're going to work with our family engagement coordinators. We also want to promote at our local events such as kindergarten registration, pre-K registration, to let them know about job opportunities within the district. We would like to expand our job fairs. We actually hosted one on October 3rd of this month. We had a very nice turnout and in fact, have also have already received applicants from that job fair and moving forward with hiring some of those. So, it was, it was a great turnout. Yeah. So, we want to expand on that as well and maybe do that on a quarterly basis or so forth, so. We also want to, our third point was to reach out to our current students within the district, especially obviously in high school, that are interested in pursuing a career in education. We have our dual enrollment program this year with S C S U that we are looking to expand that with other universities and hopefully get more grant funding to support that. So, that's something we'll reach out to our students using our guidance counselors and surveys to our students to find out who's interested in moving forward with education and helping to support them. And then, in our hiring and selection, we're going to utilize our programs in Apple Trax to identify the demographics. Even though it is an optional feature in the application to provide your race and ethnicity, we do have people who utilize that, so we're able to track that in reports to see if we are actually getting an increase in applicants that are educators of color, so. And then, in regards to retention, we want to increase our responses on our climate surveys to determine areas that need improvement with our current staff. We want to reach out to student teachers and residents to determine how the mentorship program is working to see if they would be interested in applying to our districts once they're certified. So, that way, we have those temporary staff members that come in and see how we're doing in regards to that. And then, work with our non-certified staff as well to see what their future goals are and assist them in any way in pursuing a teaching career as well. So, that is in regards to retention. In regards, and I just wanted to kind of provide a little update. So, our student population diversity is about 54% in the district. In March, when we initially started this process, I calculated a 12% staff population and diversity. We are now at 13.8, so in a seven-month timeframe, we've already increased almost 2% of our population in our staff. So, I thought that was a great point to, so it's progressing and it's moving forward and that's a good thing to see.
Jen, I was on the campus of Albertus today.
Mm-hmm.
First time I noticed a building and I believe it said teacher certification program. So, I don't know, maybe it's something you want to check into, working with Albertus. And I know they have, you know, when I was teaching, a number of our inner-city students were going to Albertus. So, it's a diverse population on that campus as well, so.
That's where my first undergrad is from.
Hmm?
That's where my first undergrad is from.
Okay. Very good.
Great school. My daughter's first undergrad is from there as well.
All right. Any questions about the plan, the revised plan that we're presenting tonight? Questions? Okay, we can, roll call vote. Okay. Ms. DePalma?
Yes.
Ms. Delongo?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Ms. Torello?
Yes.
Dr. Dillusha?
Yes.
Nine in favor, motion passes. 6.5, discussion and possible action on the approval of the 2023-2024 budget transfers. Shall we make a motion and then have some discussion?
Yep.
I make a motion to discuss the possible approval of the 2023-2024 budget transfers.
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
Yes. So, R.J., the 5300 professional purchases, we're really over on that line item.
Yes, so primarily the 5300 and the 5500, if you go in the back summary, you'll see the more specific lines of where that comes from. So, your 385 is primarily purchased professional services and your 1528 is primarily our out-of-district private school tuition for special education services.
So, is it the out-of-district that's pushing us over?
Correct.
Okay. Now, we can't do anything about that, okay.
Yeah, so primarily, I mean, we were tracking that throughout the year of the influx of students coming in based on that tuition. This transfer now will close out our 23-24 fiscal year. Good and bad was we needed to use most of our medical reserve fund to fund this fiscal year to finish.
I knew that was coming.
On the flip side, this 1.9 is very close to what we overspent and, you know, had to cover, but was pretty much in line with what our ask was for the budget. So, our modeling is pretty accurate for what we're requesting. It's just the funding piece where we fell short and had to fund the deficit.
Okay, thank you.
So, it's a good and a bad, but doesn't necessarily help us. Any other questions?
Questions or comments?
And we will be, just a note, we will be using, we are starting our next year's budget cycle internally in a couple of weeks and this will all be used in turn with this year to formulate next year's budget request as well.
Roll call, vote? Ms. DePalma?
Yes.
Ms. Delongo?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Ms. Torello?
Yes.
Dr. Dillusha?
Yes.
Nine in favor, motion carries. Okay. So, that is, no additional, right? So, that will end our meeting. Next meeting is November 12, 2024.
I just have two quick things I'd like to bring up.
Okay, sure.
All right. So, recently, Erica and I were at a political meeting extolling the virtues of some of the programs up here. And I think, Erica, you talked to Michelle about this. And people are just asking, how do we find out about this stuff? These are not parents, so they're, you know, kids in school. But we're talking about these programs and they all, you know, they're excited about it too, you know? The, you know, working with the airport and working with the ships and...
Just notifying the general public, not so much in district, just general public.
Where they can find out what's going on, you know?
They can visit at our meetings.
Basically, what they said is, you know, we're...
Read our minutes.
Yeah.
I don't know, that might be...
I mean, it's hard because they're not in our communication system. But maybe I can work with Rob on putting some links up on the channel that circle back to our board presentations. I mean, we've had extensive board presentations on the maritime program, on the aviation program. We've had kids here about the C N A program. So, maybe we can, you know...
I thought maybe too, it would be good if maybe like, monthly or bimonthly, similar to your newsletter, not so much like specific groups and things like that, just more or less programming and things like that. Maybe we got some type of correspondence to town hall and then they can maybe put it on their website.
Okay.
As like some form of communication or, you know, just like, because it's, I mean, it's still inclusive of the town, so.
Yes.
So, I, I think I can add town members as guests in parent square and include them in the weekly newsletter.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
The other thing that I just want to mention is, because the day before our next meeting is Veterans Day, it's on a Monday. As elected officials, everybody sitting here is invited to participate. That will be, as always, Veterans Day is 11/11/11, 11th day of the 11th month at the 11th hour. We'll be meeting at American Legion Post and then procession to the green with, leaving the green, leaving the post at 10:40 and festivities on the green at 11:00. I like this one Veterans Day much more because it honors all veterans and as opposed to Memorial Day, we're honoring those that have passed. So, this is a more...
Uplifting.
Yes, more festive. So, anyway, anybody here that's on the board is invited to meet us at the post and you can participate in the procession. And that's all I got.
Thanks, Jeff, that's very sweet.
All right.
Also, we need to schedule, if we can, everyone, we're going to put out so we can have that work session for discussion of the K5. Information that we can all...
Yep, we'll put out a poll for a few upcoming dates to wrap up that conversation.
I know... I know that you mentioned that, that many people have been invited to the 11/12 meeting already to discuss the 6/12, so...
Yes.
See what we can do.
Yep, so we'll try to do that between now and November 12.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Meeting is adjourned.